Good evening, I'm Mayor Allen Joins and I call to order this February 21st meeting of the Winston Salem City Council. Pursuant to the policy and procedures adopted by the City Council relative to virtual meetings, I have determined that it's not feasible for the City Council and I to meet together tonight physically. And due to the pandemic, all council members are participating virtually. Council members will vote by roll call vote. A council member will be recognized, raise their hand, and state their vote. The City Clerk, please, will call the roll.
Councilmember Larson?
Present.
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Monday?
Present.
Councilmember Cipio?
Present.
Mayor Protem Adams?
Here.
Councilmember Taylor?
Present.
Councilmember McIntosh?
Here.
Councilmember Burke?
Here.
Great, thank you. Would you please join the City Council with me in a moment of silence? Thank you very much. Tonight's agenda of the City Council is comprised of two parts, the consent agenda and the general agenda. As always, in the consent agenda, items have been unanimously approved by committee of the City Council or are being submitted in accordance with established city procedure. There'll be no discussion of the items on this agenda unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered individual. Items not removed from the consent agenda will be enacted with one motion. We're televising this meeting live tonight on TV 13, and it will be replayed on Tuesday at 9:00 a.m. and again Wednesday at 9:00 p.m. Copies of our agenda, as well as videos of previous meetings, are always available online at the city's website, And just select the City Government menu, click on the "Watch Meetings Online" option. Councilmembers, are there any items you wish to approve, uh, remove from the consent agenda? Councilor Cipio?
Yes, C9 and C11.
All right, any others? Not an inter-
For approval of the balance of the agenda, Mayor.
Second. Motion, second. We'll go to the roll call to approve the balance of the agenda. Now, Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Monday?
Aye.
Councilmember Cipio?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh?
Aye.
And Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Thank you, the consent agenda balance is approved, we'll now go to item C9.
Item C9, consideration of items relating to the Federal Transit Administration's Federal Fiscal Year 2021, Section 5307, Bob's Access Reversed Commune, Grant Awards for Eligible Recipients, Recommended by Finance Committee.
Councilwoman Cipio?
Yes, I just had a question. Um, one of the largest recipients on the list is, um, Support Systems of Forsyth County. I'm just not familiar with that name and where they're located and who runs that organization. Uh, so I wondered if someone could just give me a brief update on what organization that is, and perhaps they have a different name on their vehicles, I just am not familiar with that.
Ms. McCullough, could you handle that one?
Yes, sir, good evening, uh, Mayor Joins, Mayor Protem Adams, and members of council. Support Services is a local agency in Winston-Salem. They just recently began providing transportation services, um, within the last two years. They do provide services to individuals needing to get to work, uh, getting to school opportunities. And the owner, I think her name is Courtney James, uh, but she is a local business owner here in Winston. And if you would like, uh, Councilmember Cipio, I can provide you even more information on, on, um, the company itself.
Thank you, I would not. Thank you.
Councilwoman Cipio?
I, I didn't hear you, Mayor.
If you'd like to make a motion?
Oh, yes, thank you. Uh, I'd like to move, uh, to approve, uh, C9.
Thank you, is there a second? Thank you. All right, we'll go to roll call, Councilwoman Larson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Monday?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cipio?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Burke?
Yes.
Thank you, that's unanimous. Item C11?
Item C11, Resident's Physical Recovery Funds for the Transformational Grant Phase for Nonprofit Organizations, Recommended by Finance Committee.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cipio?
Uh, yes, I believe this is such a, uh, important item. I'd like to, uh, for the residents and our business owners and nonprofit people to understand what's going on. So if you'd have a, a, a presentation on that, and, and then I have just a few other questions.
Ms. Tash, could, or Ms. Martin, could you, or if you give just a brief summary of this item?
Yes, sir, good evening, Mayor Joins, Mayor Protem Adams, and members of the City Council. I am going to recognize Deputy Vice Director Meredith Morton for, uh, quick remarks on this item.
Okay, Ms. Martin?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the City Council. Um, just as brief remarks, um, this phase of utilizing the ARPA funds, um, is seeking to move the needle of key components of the city's strategic plan, which would trigger a profound ripple effect of positive and multidimensional change within our community. We would like for this process to open up, um, in, in March, and it would be open for a, an application process for nonprofits, um, who are 501(c)(3)'s. The application would have, um, two phases of review, one just for, um, eligibility as far as ensuring the 501(c)(3) status, as well as, um, appropriate documentation being attached. And the second phase would be scoring the application based on the scoring matrix that was included within your, um, package this evening. The scoring matrix, um, has various weights, and it includes, um, organizational capacity, geographic and demographic factors, alignment to specific strategic plan priorities based on tier, short and long-term impact to the community, collaboration and stakeholder partners, funding sustainability, administration and reporting, and finally, board representation matching, matching our community. Like I said, we would like the applications to hopefully open in March. They would remain open for a month and close in April, when staff would immediately begin review on these applications. I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Martin, any questions, uh, no, Councilwoman Cipio, go ahead.
Um, I had, um, I think people need to know, is there a minimum or maximum out of the grant? Um, and I think the total amount of money, the pot that we're setting aside for this is 10.5 million dollars, is that right?
That, that's what was initially set aside within the framework, the ten, the little over 10 million, 10.5 million, was set aside in the framework, um, and that was to go towards social and economic assistance, which the transformational phase would do that and accomplish that, so that's the pot of money we would be touching. There is, um, there are no maximums or minimums related to this transformational phase. It's really all based on, um, what the program is and how it scores through the application.
And, um, can you explain the qualified census tracts and how they are playing into these grants?
Yes, ma'am, I can, um, share my screen, um, briefly. We have a tool set up, um, I hope everyone can see that, where there is a map of the city, which is the dotted line here. The orange census tracts are qualified census tracts, and the green are, um, those have medium household incomes of 50,000 or less. So, really, all of the programming that we're looking for related to ARPA funding, um, are looking into serving, um, serving these QCT areas, as well as these second-tier areas.
So, does that mean that the programs have to impact people who are in the orange and the green area, and/or green areas?
Primarily the orange, um, the way the scoring matrix is set up, it would, um, take into account who you were serving as a nonprofit. Um, and so that, with, with the application, there will be steps in there to show that you are serving those communities and those QCTs, um, and that, that would be taken into account within the scoring of the application.
And I know there are criteria for the nonprofits, can you just go over those, the criteria in order for someone to apply?
Yes, ma'am, they, um, they are required to be a 501(c)(3) with current active status, and their status needs to be in place one year prior to the request for proposals being released. So if we're planning to release this in March of this year, they, that would have needed to be in place March of 2021.
Okay. And then one final question?
Yes, ma'am.
How, how do we determine what's transformative?
Well, I, if, the way we've set up the scoring matrix is, um, to allow kind of looking at that bigger picture, and especially relating it to the strategic plan. Um, the strategic plan are really the key areas that you all have, um, set up to be our focus for the next four years. And so, um, if, if an application or a proposal is touching and moving the needle on one of those items, I, I would dare say that that's transformational.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember, if you'd like to make a motion, then I'll, uh, recognize Councilwoman Larson, who wants to speak.
All right, um, I move that we accept, uh, C11.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McCullough, Councilwoman Larson, you got a question or a comment?
Yes, Mayor, thank you, um, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, fellow council members. Um, Meredith, could you give me a quick summary of the finances here? We're going to approve 10.5 million tonight for, uh, transformative, uh, programs. Uh, we've already approved, it's about 3 million other aspects of the project. What, what is the balance of the 51/7 that we have? And is that, is there, is, is there more money to be allocated after tonight?
There is, Councilmember Larson, and then, and really, this item is actually more so just approving this phase, as well as the scoring matrix that we're moving to, not necessarily, um, the funds. I can pull up the framework here that staff has been going by, I hope you all, can you all see that?
Yes.
Um, and so you can see Phase 1 are the programs that we, we previously, um, put into place as, as we've moved forward. And so the future phases, um, while you don't see transformational down there, it, this phase is touching that social assistance and the economic assistance portions of the framework that we've initially, um, created when we were taking on the ARPA funds.
So, we see proposals still on a separate call for, uh, action on housing investment and, um, uh, other, other calculations that are still on this list that, are we approving, are we approving this whole list tonight?
No, sir, this is, this is just the framework that was initially established to kind of give staff a directive of how to utilize, um, how to utilize these funds and move forward. We will obviously continue to bring items forward as they arise. So as, as, after the housing summit, and we figure out some of the, how we would utilize the housing investment funds, we would definitely bring that information forward to council for your, for your direction and approval as we move forward.
Okay, thank you. Protem Adams?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Ms. Martin, could you go ahead and just, uh, communicate to the public where this information can be found? And/or if they have to call someone?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, if, um, if the public would like more information, they can visit our website, cityofws.org backslash CLFRF. We try to keep that, that website as up-to-date as possible with all of the, um, programming that's taking place, via email or phone, all of my information is also on the website. Um, and finally, actually, our next public engagement meeting, we have those once a month. Um, they vary on days and times, trying to make it accessible to anyone and everyone, depending on the month and their schedules. But our next one is March 17th at noon, and that will be virtual.
Thank you, do have a motion and a second on the floor to approve item C11. Go to roll call, Councilwoman Larson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Monday?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cipio?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Burke?
Yes.
Thank you, that is unanimous. We'll now go to the general agenda, which is comprised of the following items. It's an item related to the funding for residents within the one-mile radius who were impacted by the Winston Weaver fertilizer plant fire. The three items related to boards and commissions, and the public comment period. The public comment period is a time that we set aside once a month for citizens to voice their opinions on matters that are germane to city government. The virtual comment period is called, each speaker will be given three minutes, and the comment period is limited to a total of 30 minutes. Ms. Kenny, would you read the first item, please?
Item G1, consideration of items relating to authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with a nonprofit to disperse the funding approved for residents within the one-mile radius who were impacted by the Winston Weaver fertilizer plant fire, recommended by Finance Committee with three in favor and one abstaining.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Finance Committee, you abstained on this item, do you wish to, maybe to refer this to the, uh, Vice Chairman?
Uh, refer to Ms. Adams or Ms. Tony, uh, whoever would be the next person.
Okay, let's get a motion on the floor, and, uh, if I recognize, uh, Mayor Protem Adams.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I move that we approve Resolution G1, uh, on the agenda.
Thank you, is there a second?
Thank you. ... and how we would craft a, a policy, um, and action going forward, as well as information about the recommended nonprofit to disperse these funds. In your packet, you have the policy determined to be a catastrophic event, um, of a magnitude, it meets certain criteria, um, a fund could be established. The, um, applicants would have to live in the city limits, they would have to be low to moderate income. That is defined, we use the federal definition around low to moderate income, which is 80% of the area median income. They have to live within the evacuation zone or work for a business located in the evacuation zone. reimbursable expenses may include, but are not limited to, hotel expenses, food, lost wages, uh, and other verifiable expenses. And the applicant could seek reimbursement, uh, they must provide documentation of expenses, uh, where reimbursement is sought. In the event documentation is not readily available, a self-certification may be accepted, um, in the form approved by the city. The maximum reimbursement would be $1,000 per household, per catastrophic event. Applicants would be disqualified for receiving these funds if they received reimbursement from other resources, whether that's public or private. We know that other nonprofits are assisting with this particular event, and so we will work with nonprofits to make sure there's not a duplication of effort. The City Council will receive reports about the dispersment, um, and this policy can be modified, but will remain effective, uh, from the adoption date until rescinded. Those are kind of the highlights of the policy. The nonprofit that the staff recommends is the Experiment in Self-Reliance. ESR has been serving low to moderate income populations in Winston-Salem for over 55 years. They are physically located in the north ward, and they are in very close proximity to the, um, area in that one-mile radius of the fire. So they would be easily accessible to residents in that area. ESR has a long history of accepting and, and dispersing funding, including, uh, federal funding. Uh, they've been a pass-through for city funding, so they have a long history, they know how to screen clients, um, and distribute funds, and so, um, this would be like no other, so they could start up pretty immediately getting these funding out. They, they're been, they've been giving out COVID relief funding as well, so, uh, clients who would show up and apply for this relief funding, they would also see if they are eligible for other additional funding as well. The, the rest of the criteria is in line with the policy, um, for distribution. And Mayor, that's, um, my report.
Thank you, Ms. Tony, uh, Tony, we talked about a deadline for applications to be filed on this, is that a part of the policy? I didn't see it.
It is not a po- part of the policy. Um, I think each qualifying event, we could, um, determine that based on the event. I know with this particular event, we would like to, um, distribute the funding, hopefully, within two months of the time we execute the contract with the nonprofit agency. And any unused funds would revert back to our general fund balance before the end of this fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Clark?
Uh, yes, thank you, and thank you, Ms. Tony, for a good presentation. I abstained at the Finance Committee, as I felt like we did not have enough meat on the bone, so to speak. Uh, I would like to compliment staff, I think they've come a long ways. Uh, I was glad to see that, see that we did put the hotel in with, uh, receipts required, and that we're working with other agencies to do that. We also put in the lost wages with the definition of who is eligible for it, and it included anyone who worked in this area who lived in the city. Also, we, uh, listen, ESR, I think is a very reputable organization. Uh, we've been working with them for many years on a lot of different issues, and I think they, they are, uh, you cannot have picked a better group to do this. There is one area that gives me, uh, major indigestion. Uh, with the current proposal, a person can get $1,000 basically by signing their name to a piece of paper. We are allowing self-certification. I believe there's 2,400 households, that's the number that I'm remembering, uh, that's 2.4 million dollars off the top. Uh, I will say, I've had some extensive negotiations with various people involved in this, and I'm going to offer a friendly amendment that we put a cap of $300 per house in impact, things that you have receipts for, hotels, uh, wages, et cetera. But I, I just think a thousand with no documentations is a little high. So I'll go back there as a friendly amendment, we'll see what happens.
Would the, um, motion maker, uh, Mayor Protem Adams, would you accept that as a friendly amendment?
If it means me getting the process started and money out the door to the most needed, I'll accept Councilmember, Ms. Clark, friendly amendment with that. Again, as Ms. Tony said, that we will follow up and see how the process is going, much like what HUD had to do in the federal government, when they realized that the money was not going out the door because they made the process too difficult, uh, for ERAP and other funding, uh, for poor and marginalized people. So I accept Mr. Clark's friendly amendment.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and, uh, Councilwoman Burke, you seconded the motion, would you, uh, agree to the friendly amendment as well?
Yes, I would, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. All right, Councilwoman Cipio has to be recognized?
Uh, yes, um, Ms. Tony, did you consider that maybe we need to have in the policy a, um, process for appealing a decision? Uh, if someone specifically, like if ESR says no, that there's a process that a resident could appeal that decision, um, if they felt strongly about that. And I don't know if we've had those, a process with any other funds we've been distributing, so that people can have their day in court, so to speak, if there's something that they believe they should be receiving.
Councilmember Cipio, um, that has not come up per se. You know, we have, we'll kind of carve out the eligibility criteria, even in the contract that we have with ESR. And so, essentially, if people meet the eligibility criteria, they would qualify. I think having the provision that, in the event documentation is not available, it does give them some leeway to, um, allow for assisting them. If, in the event, if for anything, if people complain, or if there are issues, they always can come back to the city, which, which will happen. But I don't know, and that would be totally up to the council, um, to decide if that provision needs to be in the policy.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Monday?
Jim, can I be heard?
Oh, it's a, who is that, Councilwoman, so Carmen?
Tawana.
That was not me, I think that was-
Okay. All right, uh, Councilwoman Monday?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I, I want to publicly state something that we all know, and we've said it before, but I've gotten a lot of, um, emails and calls for, uh, from people who are both, uh, for this, I mean, uh, for this measure, and some who are very much against it. We know that this was not the city's fault. We know that the, uh, the fire and the results, um, are because of what happened at Weaver Fertilizer. However, we have a moral and ethical obligation to the people who were impacted. They could potentially be reimbursed by Weaver, but we've seen things dragged through the courts months and years before money is ever paid out. And, and these are folks who can least, uh, you know, withstand two to three to- And these are folks who can least withstand two to three to four months without money if they've spent everything that they had to make it through this difficult period. So I'm glad that we're able to help them. At the same time, I acknowledge that this is a moral and an ethical call, not a legal call. So I want to help these people. Now, having said that, I do have one concern, and this would be, I guess, for Assistant City Manager Tony to address. The penalty for fraud is you give the money back. And I am not worried about the people who really need this money, but we have scammers everywhere. We will, we don't know all these six thousand people. We don't know all these two thousand, three thousand households. So I think that there is a potential for scammers to come in and try to defraud us through ESR to get money. And if the only penalty is give us that money back, that's not much of a penalty, so there's no reason not to go for it. I just have a concern when there is no penalty for what is, it's frauding. It's frauding the city, defrauding the city if they present falsified documents.
Thank you.
City Attorney, you want to comment on that one?
Yes, I'd be happy to, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and councilmembers. There are actually other criminal laws that come into place when you try to defraud the local government or any government, governmental entity. They're just not mentioned or outlined in here, but there are laws on the books that we can certainly apply to a particular situation. But they try to defraud local government.
That satisfies me. Thank you so much for that information, Attorney Carmen.
Sure.
And Councilor Monday, you bring up a good point, that there is provision in the policy that the city will aggressively seek reimbursement from the company or their insurance agents to get ourselves reimbursed for stepping forward, because as you say, we need to move forward as quickly as possible to help these individuals, but we also need to be good financial stewards of our dollars and try to get our money back. Mayor, I see, Councilor Larson, then Mayor Pro Tem Adams.
Mr. Mayor, you answered the question about reimbursement to the city, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Adams?
I want everybody, thank you, Mayor and council, to understand this has been a very traumatic experience. A very traumatic experience for the people of the north, northeast, and northwest ward, a one-mile radius. And the fact that, again, the policy as it's written, much like ERAP and everything else, it's not like people like me and others will be coming to apply for the money. I live in the zone. That's why the government, the feds, put that in there. You know, I think when you think about the sadness of this whole event, and to actively personally see the constituents up close and personal at the two meetings last week. The trauma, the fear, the hurt, the anguish, the anxiety, all of us there, PTSD. The stories they told of getting up in the middle of the night, running out with nothing but the clothes on their backs, children crying, elderly people not being able to move. Some people didn't leave the zone. That is correct, because they had nowhere to go and because they were afraid. But I want people to understand that, again, these families and businesses that we can't do anything for yet, they pay taxes just like everybody else. And maybe their taxes doesn't amount to much to most, but their money, just like church, goes into the same plate. And when I received emails from people, yes, emails, basically calling out black and brown, marginalized, qualified census tracts as people who are trying to deceive the city to get money. This money is not a lot of money, not compared to the money that we invest in businesses and everything else. And we can tell our constituents and people that this is for economic development and community, and it's going to build, and we're going to get these jobs. And these are the things in that trickle-down effect that they never see. The time that we, they need us the most. I understand the apprehension of the council, but see, for me, after being on this council for thirteen years and modeling at the staff and the people that we have and our workings with federal, state, and county governments and other municipalities, I trust in their due diligence to research. I trust the policy that we put together. I trust the fact that over the past two and a half years, we have dealt with massive amounts of money from the federal government and ensuring that there was no fraud or embezzlement or anything else. So I just hope that everybody remembers that the people of the impacted area didn't ask for this. They didn't see it coming. And all they're asking is for a little bit of something, hope and humanity. And I hope that you'll support this friendly amendment. And I hope, yes, that we'll be coming back if there's a need, that we see that there are issues with the process, just like ERAP. The federal had to come back and change the ERAP because the money wasn't going out because they made the policy so strict. People couldn't comply. And the same thing goes with ARPA and all of that. So I look forward to hopefully getting some funding and assistance in the hands of these small businesses, small residents and everybody in the community who need this little bit of hope. Thank you for your indulgence, Mayor, members of the council.
Thank you. Councilor MacIntosh?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank staff for crafting a really good, a really good piece of legislation here. I think it addresses, I know it addresses concerns that I had at the finance meeting, those being the issue of reimbursement, although on the carpet it just mentions the Weaver Company is who we're seeking reimbursement from. I don't think we need to put this in the carpet. I think we need to also look for other sources for reimbursement, state, federal, whatever. The, and the other thing was that this not create a precedent that can get used all the time, so I think those safeguards are in place. I want to echo and amplify a little bit of what both Mayor Pro Tem and Councilor Monday said. This event was not our fault. This event was not within our ability to control or to regulate. And so I feel like we are stepping into a breach where no one else has the ability or the power to step in right now. The Red Cross is not available to put money in. We're doing this because no one else is there to help folks to whom, this is a fairly significant amount of money and dealing with a disruption in their lives. So I do feel there's a moral obligation for us, and I'm very happy with the mechanics of how we've crafted this. I do just want to make sure that we use everything in our power to both ask and plead and beg the state government to help us out here as their lack of regulations were one of the reasons that this event happened. But I want to work with them to see if we can get some money out of the state as well, but thank you, staff, for doing this. I really appreciate it.
Councilor Burke?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and members of the council. I just want to say that I totally support this amendment. And I want to say, yes, all of us saw the news. We saw, we read the paper. We read and saw the press releases. But, and I thought, when I saw all of that and read all of that, I thought I had a great understanding about the fire and the impact that it had on the people, especially within the one-mile radius. But not until I attended those two community meetings last week and I heard the personal stories from resident after resident that it really resonated with me, the magnitude of how these residents were impacted by this fire. And they were impacted in ways that only we can, can or could understand by listening to them. And this is not going to solve their problems. It's not going to make the problems go away, but it is a small way that we can help them to know that we heard them and we care, and we're going to do something because it's the right thing to do, to let them know that we care because they are our citizens. So I want every, everybody who's a resident within the one-mile radius of the Weaver Fire Plant to know that I heard you and I stand with you. Escuche sus prey ocupaciones y estoy con ustedes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we do have a motion on the floor to approve this policy and the financing for it with an amendment to put a three hundred dollar cap on any individual or household that's relying on the self-certification process. So that's the motion. Does everybody understand the motion? We'll move to.
Join's recommendation for reapportment to the City County Planning Board, Mo McRae, term expiring February twenty twenty-six.
Motion approved. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. In discussion. All right, we'll go to the roll call vote to approve this appointment. Councilor Larson?
Yes.
Councilor Clark?
Yes.
Councilor Monday?
Aye.
Councilor Cipio?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Adams?
Yes.
Councilor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilor MacIntosh?
Aye.
Councilor Burke?
Yes.
Thank you. That's unanimous. Item G three?
Item G three, Mayor joins recommendation for appointment to the Public Art Commission, Marvett Pratt Aldridge, term expiring December twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Larson. In discussion. Go to roll call. Councilor Larson?
Yes.
Councilor Clark?
Yes.
Councilor Monday?
Aye.
Councilor Cipio?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Adams?
Yes.
Councilor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilor MacIntosh?
Aye.
Councilor Burke?
Yes.
Thank you. And item G four?
Item G four, Mayor joins recommendation for reapportment to the Urban Food Policy Council, Michael Banner, term expiring September twenty twenty-four.
Is there a motion?
Second, Monday?
Thank you. Motion second. Discussion. Go to roll call. Councilor Larson?
Yes.
Councilor Clark?
Yes.
Councilor Monday?
Aye.
Councilor Cipio?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Adams?
Yes.
Councilor Taylor? Thank you. That is unanimous. We'll now go to item G five.
Item G five, public comment period.
Thank you. This is, again, a time that we set aside thirty minutes and ask citizens to comment to the city council on I O matters are germane to city government. We'd ask you to give your name and address for the record when your name is called and limit your comments to three minutes. Keeney, would you call the first person, please?
Miranda Jones.
Miranda Jones, four oh five Corona Street. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and members of city council. Head out of Winston, and several other activist groups are always in support of the people. This includes people not only expect, not only, not only impacted by unexpected crisis, but people who are always impacted by systemic issues such as poverty, racism, injustice, police brutality, and decisions made by power brokers like you. We're most distressed by the crisis created by a Winston Weaver fire, which took place on January thirty-first. This was no fault of the residents and no fault of the city, so it is alarming that the city seeks to take money from the general funds to make small businesses whole. This flies in the face of activists who during the spring and summer of twenty twenty and even twenty twenty-one repeatedly ask you to reallocate funds from your inflated law enforcement budget. We ask you to find funding for social programming because several of you have made a commitment to social justice during the twenty twenty protests. Most of our cries went unheard despite your moral and ethical obligation to black people and poor people. We asked you to make small businesses whole when the cause lies to Winston Weaver, Weaver feels like a misuse of taxpayer dollars. Sadly, this isn't the first time this has happened. According to our research, the hydroponic garden was a waste of one point four million dollars. Is this a pattern? Why is a Democrat-led majority bailing out businesses? Did these businesses not obtain funds through the coronavirus fiscal recovery funds last year? This is corporate welfare, yet we demonize and miscategorize the recipients of welfare all of the time. We hope you find these same funds and more during this next upcoming budget cycle and that you'll be moral, ethical, and good stewards of the funds then. Thank you. I yield the remainder of my time.
Next speaker.
Philip Carter.
It's good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, and distinguished council members. It has been mentioned that it is our moral duty to help out our fellow citizens, in which I agree strongly. But I also expect those that distribute the taxpayers' money to store that same diligence when it comes to stewardship. I would like to hear that in what you're planning on doing, it is a written agreement with Weaver Fertilizer to reimburse the city of all monies that are allocated. As it has been mentioned, they should have insurance. And if they don't have insurance, then I would suggest the city looks at taking out a lien on their property and possibly or attempting to freeze their assets to that money is recouped. Because we need that money, especially if we're going into the general fund to rescue corporations, to rescue citizens that are, as Ms. Jones said, in dire need every day. That is what I would like to hear, that it is a contractual agreement with Weaver to reimburse the city of the money that is allocated to make the people whole due to their, I'm not going to say malicious, but possibly reckless negligence, become whole. That is what I would like to hear. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Mayor, that's all we've had to sign up to speak. Don Dawn's iPhone just raised their hand to speak.
Good evening, Mayor Joins and Madam Pro Tem and the city council. I thank you for hearing me tonight. First, I want to thank Mayor Pro Tem Adams. I was one of the residents who was displaced. And I appreciated her and Councilwoman Burke having the meetings, because that's one of the meetings I actually attended and got to tell the story of me and my two children and how we fled from our home. I thank the council for approving the funds to help the residents. However, there are several questions I have about allocation, ERS, the self-certification, what proofs are required to show loss of wages. As because of COVID, I fall into that category where I was misplaced from not only my home, but my place of employment, being that my office now has us work from home. So I'm just really curious about how this self-certification works, how we're supposed to show proof of lost wages. Is it our paycheck that we didn't get? So I'm just, I'm just curious as to how we're supposed to show that aspect of the proof that we need. I mean, I have hotel receipts. I have the receipts I need outside of that, but it's just that, that work aspect that I'm really curious of. And again, I do thank you for approving this because the people that I saw were not trying to defraud the state. They just really need the help. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else, Cindy?
No, sir, that's it.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment period. I know we have a couple people who want to speak, but I want to just clarify in response to one of the comments, none of this money is going to businesses. We can't legally do that. The money is going to low-income individuals who were impacted negatively by this situation. Councilor McClark and then Mayor Pro Tem Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. I've had some questions on this, and I don't know when the appropriate time is to ask. I'm going to do it at the end. I've got questions like, who does regulate fertilizer plants? I have a business, one of my facilities is Burlington, and every year we fill out a form that lists, we keep denatured alcohol, a couple gallons for prepping parts before painting. Point being, we put it on some form, and I don't know if it's federal, state, local, or who, but, but just kind of who does all this? What's the current zoning of the facility? Could they rebuild on site? The other question, big question I have is air quality. I haven't heard anything on it. We got to remember, the circle we drew was the zone that people might be at risk if the plant exploded. If you were to draw the circle of who may have been impacted by the air quality, it would be a very large circle because the winds would have taken the bloom, plume in many different directions. So I've just got all sorts of questions like that, and I'm assuming someone's working on all this, but it would be nice just to get a periodic update in these various areas. And I have so little information, I really don't know what to ask other than give us as much as you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. And actually, I've spoken to the city manager about creating a working task force, maybe with staff as well as maybe some private citizens to work. maybe with staff as well as maybe some private citizens to work on this whole issue. Many questions, as Councilor MacIntosh mentioned, the, our hands are tied in a lot, a lot of ways there, but hopefully the manager's putting together his thoughts on that. Councilor, I would choose the Mayor Protem Adams.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I have been in discussions off and on with staff and the mayor for the past three weeks, as well as others that have been a part of the process. I understand council and public, you don't know a lot, and we don't know a lot as well. But I do know that part of, again, corrective and preventive action is there has to be a review, not just of the fire, but of our process as to how we handle it. You know, I know that the fire department and all of the personnel, police and emergency management and others and volunteers did a great job. But again, this situation allowed us to see some issues with our own process systems of how we operate when it does come to emergency management because we've never had anything of this scale. So hopefully, we will be getting back to you, as the mayor said, a task force to investigate, to ask the questions of the what-if and the why or the how of how we did everything, whether it was communication to our Latino Hispanic community as well as our black people and poor people and businesses in the community, whether there were other steps that we now see that maybe some of us think we should have taken. All of that is to come, and like Councilmember Burke, the people told us at the two meetings, they hope it's not next year when they hear from us again. And I promised them that after tonight, in the next seven to ten days or two weeks, there will be two more community meetings to keep them informed. Again, everybody doesn't read their news or whatever on our websites and social media. So Councilmember Burke and I will be collaborating on that. Thank you.
Thank you, and just to take it one step further, not only debriefing on the event, but to look at the broader picture of zoning and requirements that we might be able to do in terms of storage of hazardous materials and things of that nature. Thank you all. Customers, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Agreed.
Motion second to adjourn. All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?